Had to have high, high hopes for living. Shooting for the stars when I couldn't make a killing. Didn't ever die, but I always had a vision. Always had high, high hopes. Had to have high, high hopes for living. Didn't know how, but I always had a feeling. I was gonna be that one in a million. Always had high, high hopes. Mama said fulfill the prophecy. Be something great. Go make a legacy. Manifest destiny. Back in the days, we wanted everything. Wanted everything. Mama said, burn your biographies. Rewrite your history. Light up your wireless dreams. Music and victories. Every day, we wanted everything. Wanted everything.
Biggie back on what our student speaker said. I wanted to provide additional insight onto us as to why our program has been so successful. The answer is simple, and it requires a gentle scan of the room. There is a quote that resonated with me when I decided on what, what I was going to say tonight. Show me your people, and I will show you our future. My people consist of a teaching staff that are dedicated to individuals they serve. They work tirelessly to ensure that students are not only meeting expectations, but exceeding them. They model intimate and in action what it means to be a leader every day. Additionally, we have our office staff that demonstrates the importance of being efficient. The equal mo- the equally model to students how to organize events, delegate tasks, and be supportive in every capacity possible. Ms. Shakira and Ms. Lupita serve as co-advisors throughout the day, ensuring that our students are doing the best and being the best they can be. This has essentially ignited a conversation regarding what we would like to emphasize at our site. In the future, we would like to be referred to as Braddock Leadership Academy. We would like to provide students with opportunities to build communication skills, including public speaking opportunities and part partnering and event planning with local community groups and members. Our reach extends from the classroom to the community. Each of us recognizes the importance of mentoring, and what we found was that as we work together, we impact future leaders in the pursuit of greatness. Tonight, came Ani, Ammarani, and Isaiah, as well as the rest of our Safe School ambassadors, are only a few examples of the high caliber of students we interact with daily. I am proud to work in conjunction with them, and I'm equally proud of what each of them has accomplished. Please remember their faces, because there will be our next generation of leaders. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
These Superintendent Kraus, Executive Cabinet, and audience, thank you for being here. I am Deborah Fernandez.
I'm Roma Flores, and we're here to present our Hope Scholars School.
There you go. Um, so what is Hope Scholars Program? Um, what we are is a second chance program that provides a supportive small group environment with curriculum, instruction, guidance and counseling, psychological services, and tutorial assistance to help students overcome barriers to learning. Designed to support students who are irregular in attendance, need to unlearn and replace other negative behaviors or unsuccessful due to academic, academically due to behavior. Um, the Hope Scholars Program was created for students who are not working successfully in a traditional school setting because of behavior. I need, uh, learn better with one or one small group instruction. Um, need an alternative learning environment. Um, may react negatively, um, in high-stress environments. Um, have experienced incidents that have caused trauma to them. A hundred percent of our students have had some kind of trauma that we, that we've received. Um, experienced distracting behaviors that impact his or her ability to benefit from a traditional school setting. Um, so who's eligible for our program? Um, so, um, to be eligible for our program, um, you, you need to receive a re- it comes from your homeschool. Uh, it comes with documented, uh, documentation of multiple interventions. So it's not a one and done, we want a student out. There has to be some kind of proof of interventions done in the process. The school has held at least one parent conference prior to the decision to refer the students to Hope Scholars Program. So there's been some kind of meeting to talk about what's going on, um, before they're saying we're sending someone to Hope. Um, students must have multiple days of suspension. Middle school have had multiple behavior incidents that would have qualified for suspension, but the schools assigned the alternative consequence and leave suspension. Um, and then a big piece, uh, are students and parents who agree and are willing to abide by the program by all program expectations or requirement. It's a big piece. Um, a lot of times too, as the students get older, um, it's, it's easier just to kind of not get into what's going on, because it's sometimes it's, it's a lot of discipline, um, going back and forth. So, um, so it's basically we team up together, um, as a family with the parents, and we, we work as a team. So we expect whatever's going on at school, they will support us. Um, if it comes to grounding, giving video games, whatever needs to do, um, handing remotes, those things.
Parent and student accountability is.
Is our big piece. Parent and tunnel, yeah. Um, the goal of the Hope Program, um, is the Hope Scholars are intended to provide students with a new start by teaching them skills needed to be successful in life, and when they transition, transition back to their homeschool. So kind of teaching them how to work with their, uh, triggers. Um, we focus on social emotional learning. Um, so through that, we do restorative practices. Um, so we're learning relationship building. We're learning, um, how to stop triggers or understanding what a trigger is and how do we come back from that.
Working on accountability and how we affect those around us.
Yes. So knowing that, like, even if a student coming into an intake meeting will have, will understand that they're affecting their parents who are driving. They're affecting their brother and sister who may not get to go to school with them. So looking at the bigger picture is finding that accountability piece, because there's nothing with discipline if there's not of accountability to understand why. Um, we do a lot of Freedom Miter lessons. Flores and I are both Freedom Miter teachers. So we focus a lot on the social emotional pieces with the Freedom Miters. Learning about resilience, learning about, um.
Hope and, um, actually resilience is, is.
It's kind of a big one, yeah.
Students, because they've gone through so many things that they need to learn how to bounce back from them and continue forward.
And with the Freedom Mitters too, we have forty-year-olds that are changed by, by a teacher working with them. So it's nice to see that, like, they can see the adults that we're working with. Like, that person was you at that age, so, um, it's kind of me. Uh, social emotional group lessons. Um, we do weekly group meetings with Mr. Mike. He's a desert, some, some mountain.
Desert mountain.
Self counselor. Um, so he'll do groups with our students. Um, so it's like forty-five minutes. The, the students get to be away with us, but they love that learning, and they're learning. Somebody does it, he kind of takes a bunch of their triggers, kind of interviews them each before, and then they have, like, a different lessons they kind of decided that they're gonna go through.
Yes, they work on social skills.
And then we do daily circle check-ins. Everything we do, um, everything we do, we work with the students, never to them or for them. So everything from norms to our school colors, to everything is decided with the students. Um, so that we work as a team. Um, we also focus on journaling, so the students are able to journal and kind of write what's going on. And, um, like I said, everything that is, our, our whole thing is a foundation of family. Um, academics, uh, students work on edutainment classes with one-on-one tutoring as needed. Uh, we come with students have multiple different levels, so it's important that we're, we're getting that tutoring that indeed. Um, students usually receive, must receive no less than seventy-five percent score on their work. Um, that was a group created expectations. The students decided that they were not going to be a school of, well, we also came together. We're not going to be a, a program of students failing. So if we're changing everything, and we're getting a second chart chance, we're dealing with academics too. So the students, um, as a group, and they'll tell you as, as a group, we will not do seventy-five or less. It's seventy-five or higher, and it's actually become a competition between their grades. It's working. Um, students are, uh, expected, uh, students work daily on IXL to fill in learning gaps and work on standards. It's a standards-based design. On the, with IXL, we're actually able to see, because we do diagnostic tests. We can actually see when a student started having trouble academically in school, because we can see their learning gaps. So you might have a student who did great and all of a sudden have learning gaps in third grade. So we can start seeing those patterns. So we focus on IXL to fill in those learning gaps. So kids who, uh, you know, are.
Might struggle with multiplication.
Division, things they didn't get, we're hitting those IXL standards with them. Uh, students are allowed to free seat when they are caught up in classes with grade seventy-five or higher and are displaying positive behavior. As long as they're working, they are allowed to have free seating. Um, students earn activities like working in the library, Fun Friday, or extra activities like nitro type or board games when they're on task and have positive grade and progress and meeting all expectations. And the board games are fun, because we do it as a family. Um, thanks, thanks. Um, so some activities at the Hope Scholars, I'm so not gonna cry. So, um, some of our kids have never had a Christmas tree ever in their house. So we brought a tree, I wasn't gonna do this. We brought a tree, yeah.
They were really excited to decorate, because some of them had never experienced decorating a tree. And so they, they had the opportunity to kind of come together as a family and, and decorate the tree from the classroom.
And then, um, I do sugar cookies in my family, so we do family stuff. I'm gonna get it, I'm good, I'm good. So we do family stuff, so we made sugar cookie, we got sugar cookies, and we had an ugly sweater contest. And so, um, our kids are, are star, our star student who's gonna be coming, um, it, this is, uh, one of his kids, but, um, we did a hot cocoa bar and stuff for students who had to earn it. They had to earn it. Um, our next one is, um, our next activity, uh, is, uh, the activity. So we do bingo games, anything social emotional learning activities with the students. So it's all about, we don't have, like, even though we're five, six, seven, eight, we do everything as a whole group. So the whole group does bingos and does activities.
A lot of team-building activities, like some of these pictures that you see in here. A couple of them are from our bingo day, um, where they had to kind of find each other in, in their bingo. So they were running around trying to get everybody's signatures. And we also do, um, social emotional videos and things like that with them. And that's some of the other pictures you see in there too.
Did activity on the sneezes.
Oh, yeah.
Watch this, um, and the next act, uh, if you could change this slide. We had Dr. Seuss Day, we made oobleck. So it's, uh, it's not a liquid, it's not a solid. They had fun, they all had to experiment to do it. So I'm sure you guys have experienced, yeah. So we made obleck, and they cleaned up the mess, it was great.
Yes.
Um, the next, let's get to the next slide. Um, egg dying, so they earned this. Um, so many of them have never died an egg and never egg hunted. And so we, um, we kind of shut down the last hour, and we let them get to die eggs. They each about to take like five or six eggs and tie them. Many of them had never even ever experienced it. And, um, then we did a big egg hunt. So we went through and like Flores and I went and hid eggs for them, so they got to do it. Because, um, the, the truth is, a lot of our students have never had these experiences, because a lot of them are on this dis- the, the discipline cycle, they haven't had some of these things. So it's been really fun for us to kind of do these things that they've missed out on. Not that it wasn't there, you know, that whatever caused it, but it's been exciting to kind of relive some of these with the, with them. And then our next one, we have an amazing support staff. Um, so Ms. Jeanette is our, um, six heart proctor. She works with them, she walks into the bathroom, she is kind of like the other mom in the group. Um, so she's our lifeline. Ms. Joanna is another of our lifeline. We cannot function without Ms. Joanna. Um, there's so many times that they'll just jump in and help us out. And the kids all realize that we do everything family-wise. Um, our officer, um, Cunningham, he's our probation officer. Probation, we use differently, so no one in probation can come with an authority figure. We come to build relationships. So a lot of those kids have already had negative, um, incidents with police or probation. So we really focus on the positives. So he comes in and does games with them or learning things or.
He joins in our circles. He'll, he likes doing PE with them too, and, you know, the weather's really nice. So, uh, we use him for some really cool stuff with our kids.
And our last, uh, Mr. Mike, um, our counselor.
Picture.
We don't have, I, I couldn't get him a picture, but Mr. Mike, um, we rely on him for a lot of our stuff. So that's kind of our, 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 uh, our team at school. And then, um, we have the most amazing library, Annie Sambs is so lucky. Um, Angela, Ms. Angela is just amazing. Even from the day one, when we first came on campus, she adopted our kids and loved our kids. She made scarves for her kids, she's done so much. So every Wednesday, we go to the library, and she does science or she does Lego activities. And, um, challenges.
Challenges, and they have to build and then present why they should win, it's really cool.
It's been, yeah, and so, um, would you like to come up? Because we're gonna do next. Um, he, uh, Kaden, uh, one of our students, um, he is kind of our Lego master right now. So the other students are actually trying to, um, to be, to be him. Um, so we just, we love our library time, it's been amazing. And then will you do the next slide?
I don't know, I can't.
No, no, it's not, you're good, sorry. Um, and then, thank you. And some of our amazing outside support, um, uh, support, he was supposed to be here, he's stuck in traffic, otherwise he would have been here tonight, um, is, uh, from Deputy Jones and the sheriff, uh, County, San Bernardino County sheriffs. They came in, they did, um, we've been working there for a few years, and they came in and bought all kinds of greenback chairs. And what else did you guys get, like, a mouth?
Headphones, blankets, water bottles, footballs, basketballs.
All kinds of whatever they wanted, he, they said, get a list. So they bought like, uh, tons of stuff for our students, and then came in and did a full circle with our students and gave them all the stuff. So like, all this stuff's just amazing, right? You guys like it. So we have, and then also, um, with that, he also supports our parents, sometimes outside services. So he helps with those outside services. So that's kind of our Hope Scholars, and then, um, Kaden would like to present, which is, oh, thank you.
As a Hope Scholar student, I like this, since I've been here. I didn't want to come here, and these teachers like the same ones I was having at my old school. But from the, from the first week I was here, I realized that wasn't going to be the case at all. Since I've been here for a couple months now, I realized this has been one of the best schools I've been at, and some of the best teachers I've had. But when I, uh, and, and these teachers have taught me how to have patience and how to get my work done without being distracted as much. These teachers have taught me a lot of things that will help me outside of school too, more than any other teachers taught me. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Sorry. And we have matching shoes. Yes.
All right, so Hope stands for, um, Hope, Opportunity, Positivity, and Empowerment. And while that may be an acronym, um, this evening, we want to take the opportunity to recognize Deborah Fernandez and Roma Flores, um, for their support of being true hope for the students in our schools who need it the most. And so this evening, we'd like to honor Roma and Debbie. Um, they were honored on April twenty-sixth, actually, um, at San Bernardino County Shine a Light Awards. And so, um, we want to take this opportunity to recognize them both. Um, Deputy Jones, we're, we're sorry we missed him, we wanted to honor him as well. Um, because not only is he a mentor and support for the program and the students, he goes above and beyond. He's actually worked with Roma and Debbie since, uh, two thousand and nineteen. He comes in, he does circles, um, he donates items. He really goes out of his way to support the students, our teachers, and this program. So, um, with that, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize, and Ms. Berias, I'll let you say a couple of words as well.
Thank you so much for having me on behalf of Assembly Member Juan Carrillo. Uh, we are so proud of the work that you do for our students of the greatest need. So, um, to read off what the certificates read, um, "In recognition of service to students and community as a Hope Program mentor, on the behalf of the California State Legislature and the residents of the thirty-ninth Assembly District, I thank you for the caring work you have provided above and beyond the call of duty for our students of greatest need. The impact of your support is immeasurable."
Thank you. No, stop, you can't make me cry too. So.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'd first like to say that I think people online are not able to hear. I'm not sure if your, if your microphones are not working properly. You know, okay, you know. All right. Uh, good evening, board members. Um, audience online, audience in the boardroom, uh, Superintendent Kraus, Mr. Moran, Dr. Dorison. Hi. Uh, well, teacher appreciation week is in full swing. And I'm grateful to the PTSA and the administrators who have honored us and encouraged students to say thank you in so many ways. From writing cards to wearing our favorite colors, bringing a sweet treat. Um, ADCA gave each teacher a charging cord and this week on Wednesday or Thursday or Friday, they will each be getting a little bundt cake as a thank you from us. Uh, we're in the home stretch with just seventeen days of school left. State testing finishes up this Friday and we are busy, busy preparing students for the next grade level. Students will be exposed to the new math concepts that will be awaiting them at their next level. We will push for students to finish up their Lexia levels, the accelerated reader goals, IXL gold medals and more. Now is the time we can really utilize all the extra programs that have been available. All year, we've had so much on our plates to get through that as these last weeks come up and things get checked off our to-do list, we can engage the students in some other types of learning experiences and opportunities. We hope to see you at our many various promotion ceremonies. Kindergarten, fifth grade and eighth grade are big milestones for our students. Uh, Mother's Day is Sunday. I'd like to sincerely wish all of you a wonderful and rewarding Mother's Day. And Mr. Soto, I hope you have a way to honor your mother. She clearly did a good job raising you to be such a nice young man and I'm sure she's super proud of you. I know teachers have fun art activities planned for students to make something special for mom. And as we get closer to the end of the year, some of us also like to do something for dads too, even though Father's Day is quite a bit further in June. This summer school may be made, able to make that part of what we work on. Speaking of summer school, we were very pleased to get our assignments for summer school. Mrs. Coburn had her hands full trying to coordinate teacher requests for either school or grade level or both. And balance that with both the seniority levels and the credential requirements. But I am confident that we will have a terrific program, just as we've had in the past. I would encourage all teachers to publicize the summer school program again through Class Dojo or Remind or whatever you use to communicate with parents. I know the district continues to take enrollments and the more we have who can take advantage of this opportunity, the better. I know we all like the ease of a Google, uh, spreadsheet or a Google form, but honestly, if we had a paper signup this year, I know we, for a fact, we would have had more enrollments. Um, thankfully, and I'm so hopefully next year we'll be able to do both. The most important thing is getting more students in class to take advantage of the skills reinforcement and enrichment opportunities awaiting them at summer school. And now I'd like to take the opportunity to reiterate how important I, I think it is that fair compensation be offered to our administration and psychologists along the same lines as was given to teachers and CSEA. We are a family. We all work together. In fact, for heaven's sake, we spend more time with each other than with our actual families. There needs to be equity and fairness with regards to, uh, our compensation. If there's a constant imbalance between teacher salaries and administrative salaries, there will always be difficulty in attracting and keeping qualified personnel at all levels. As we are more competitive now in our salaries, so should the administrators be. I sat in on interviews on Monday to hire a new psychologist and the remark was made that we are last in the desert in salaries for our psychologists. The work they do and the caseload they carry is seriously stringent. We teachers need their support as we actively seek to identify and service the students who need help. Ultimately giving students a life in which they can sustain themselves independently and become active and engaged participants in society. That is our ultimate goal. We aren't raising children. We're raising adults. These adults need to be contributing members of society and for them to bridge the years between childhood and adulthood in order to be self-sufficient and productive human beings, we need to anticipate and satisfy their needs today. Our students have many needs, mental and emotional, health, academic support, family welfare, the list really goes on. Which brings up one other point I'd like to make, and it is that this district has not addressed the family life curriculum in four years. This year would be the fourth year. In fifth grade and in middle schools, there are specific topics that are to be taught according to ed code, uh, five, one, nine, three, one. Uh, which is AB three twenty-nine, the California Healthy Youth Act. ADTA is simply concerned that we adhere to the law to ed code in every way. And finally, next week, we are congratulating eight of our new teachers, new induction teachers who have passed probationary years one and two. I hope to see all of you at that event, Coliseum event on Thursday as well. We recognize the effort and perseverance it takes to become a teacher. And we also honor the extra time and attention given to them by our terrific, fabulous induction coaches. Thank you very much. And to you, our board, thank you again for the privilege of coming before you at these board meetings to speak, to celebrate our accomplishments as a district and to illuminate our concerns. Have a wonderful evening.
Good evening, Madam President, French, love French, excuse me, trustees, Superintendent Kraus and Cabinet. Um, I was pleasantly surprised to see Braddock here. Um, I have never let you know where I started. My roots are at Braddock when it opened in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, our specialty at that time was corn knowledge and it was a really, really, and it still is a very nice school. And it was nice to see some of my colleagues here who have also been there since nineteen ninety-eight. So that's pretty nice. Um, I also came to thank, um, negotiations team with Mr. Um, Carlos Moran. And, uh, want to thank all of you for really listening to what we had to say when we all showed up here. Uh, we really needed and we did feel validated, um, by the outcome. Um, we are at a tentative agreement right now and, uh, we, CSA will be voting this Thursday, right here in the boardroom. Um, to make sure that, and I'm hoping everything passes. So I'm looking forward to that. I was also pleasantly surprised, uh, to get an email from Ed Eddie Peralta. Uh, we will be starting negotiations a lot earlier next year. So I was very, very happy to see that as well. Well, have a good evening. That's all I have to say tonight and thank you very much.
Yes, Madam President, would you like to call up Cynthia Rodriguez to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Rodriguez. I am a paraprofessional at Gus Franklin. I spoke to the board on April twenty-fifth on why I believe increasing salaries can help retain employees. I want to say thank you for listening and acknowledging the statements that I made. I'm happy to hear that we have a tentative agreement and happy to hear that all classified are expected to get an increase of salary. Every department works very hard and deserves the increase and much more. We hope to continue to build a relationship with the district to help all classified employees feel valued and appreciated. We are all assets to the district. Thank you for your time.
Welcome back. Call to order. The time is 8:55. 7.02 roll call and form establishment, Ms. Leve.
Trustee Benz.
Here.
Trustee Turner.
Turner present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto here.
Trustee Webster.
Webster present.
Trustee La French.
Present. Form established. We'd like, I lead a motion to extend our meeting.
Webster, I motion to extend our meeting until 11:00 PM.
Benz, I second.
Ms. Leve, call for the vote, please.
Trustee Benz.
Aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner aye.
Trustee Soto.
Soto aye.
Trustee Webster.
Webster aye.
Trustee La French.
La French aye. Moving on to section eight, closed session report. 8.01 announcements of reportable actions taken during closed session. The board took action in closed session to accept the final settlement agreement for OAH case number 2023030502. It was moved by trustee Turner and second by trustee Benz. The vote was yes, Webster, Soto, Benz, Turner, and La French. Second reportable action is the board took action in closed session to accept the final settlement agreement for OAH case number 2022110480. It was moved by trustee Benz and second by trustee Webster. The vote was 5-0. The vote was as followed: yes, Webster, Soto, Benz, Turner, and La French. Moving on to section nine, public testimony.
Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Madam President. Do we have anyone from ADTA on Zoom? Mr. Duran, do you see raising their hand?
I see no one raising their hand.
Thank you. Do you see anyone for CSCA, Mr. Duran, in the Zoom meeting raising their hand?
No.
Thank you. And Madam President, I do not have any golden rods or any comments on the Zoom meeting for public comments at this time, broken session.
Thank you. Moving on to section 10, student discipline expulsions and readmissions. Section 10.01, academic services, student expulsion case. Student ID number 344675. Discipline number 2022-2023-18. I need a motion.
Trustee Turner, I motion to accept administrative hearing panel recommendation to expel student 344675 for the second semester of the 2223 school year and the first semester of the 2324 school year.
Benz, I second.
Ms. Leve, call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto aye.
Trustee Webster.
Webster aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz aye.
Trustee La French.
La French aye. Motion passed 5-0. Moving on to section 11, cabinet reports.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board, members of the community here with us in person, and members out there on Zoom. Thank you for staying with us. And this evening, I just have a few updates, and then I'll pass it along to the assistant superintendents. And so, one of the things I want to say is it's so refreshing to see our Hope Program, teachers here tonight, and the student cadence. And, you know, I was there at the award ceremony that they did. There was a few other people I wanted to thank, Ramon Rizzo, the principal of Adelanto Elementary School, and then Carol Coburn, director of academic services. So they're, they also played an instrumental part in supporting our Hope Program. And so, thank you to both of you for all the work, and thank you to everyone involved in our Hope Program. I understand Deputy Jones came. He was able to make it here, so we appreciate all the work that he and his team also do to support that. May is Appreciation Month, and there's many groups that we want to appreciate. We have our teachers, our classified staff, our nurses, our bus drivers. There's several classifications that we want to appreciate. And just know that we are doing everything we can to recognize all the hard work that you do, not only in the month of May, but throughout the year. Just know that we truly appreciate that, and we're excited to be able to see you when we get out to the sites. And thank you for all the work you do. And I also want to piggyback and thank the board for all the hard work they do. I don't think they're in the month of May, but I do want to say thank you very much to our Board of Trustees for all of the work that you do every month to help make these agendas a reality and help move our district forward. One of the other things that I wanted to mention is that we did have a snow day on March 1st. We did, the board did approve a waiver to submit to the county and the state. And one of the things that we learned is that because the snow day is built into our calendar, they would not approve the J-13, not only for us, but for several other districts in the county. So we will be looking at June 5th, which is built into the calendar for our snow day, and we'll be messaging out to staff and our families this week about that. So June 5th is our makeup day for the snow day that we did have on March 1st, and more information to follow on that. I also wanted to say that we're excited that we were able to come to a tentative agreement with CSCA. And on Thursday, we are excited that, as Ms. Lannett stated earlier, that they will be voting. So we hope that all goes well there, then we can continue moving, showing our appreciation for all of our classified members, that we appreciate all the hard work that they do. So we're excited and looking forward to the results of that vote on Thursday evening. One of the other things I wanted to mention is that Dr. Dwyson and I started the University of Southern California Urban Superintendents Academy many, 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 many months ago. It is a intense program through USC where they only take 20 people a year from across the United States. So it's not just the state of California. They're very selective, and somehow we both managed to get in. So I was very excited when that happened many, many months ago. I'm proud to say that as of this last Monday night, Dr. Dwyson and I did our final presentations as a cohort to the USC faculty and staff. And we are proud to say that we have completed the program. And once we have the date of the graduation ceremony, the board is invited to attend that. We're very excited that, and I'm proud of Dr. Dwyson. One of the things, a quick story on Dr. Dwyson. So part of this class is prepare people to be superintendents and to prepare sitting superintendents to be better superintendents. And we ended up in a private room together in a Zoom meeting where they can, they put other people together. Like, there was about five of us in that room with Dr. Dwyson, myself. We just happened to get in the same room. The USC faculty member says, okay, we're going to do mock interviews for superintendent. So who would like to start? Nobody wanted to go. And so, Dr. Dwyson says, I'll go. But what our USC faculty member didn't know is that I was in that room with her. And I have to say, it took a lot of guts and courage for Dr. Dwyson to pretend to interview to be a superintendent, knowing that her, her boss was in the same Zoom room with her. And I didn't tell the USC faculty member until after the fact that I was so proud that she was there, and I was trying not to make faces at her, trying to smile at her, but she did a great job. So I just wanted to give her kudos and a shout out, because that really took courage to do that in front of your boss there, you know? Even though it was a mock interview, and she's not going anywhere, I just wanted to say that she did a great job. So we're proud of her and myself. I don't like to toot my own horn, but I want to put that out there. And then this Thursday night, down in Rancho Cucamonga at Victoria Gardens Cultural Center, the district is receiving an award for the after-school program for the great work that goes on there. So I want to thank the after-school team that works with AYA. And I was nominated to receive an award down there, so I will be down there. And if the board is, I know that you have invites as well, if you're able to make it down there to Rancho Cucamonga this Thursday. We want to appreciate all the work that happens in our after-school program that we do. And then finally, I just want to say to all the mothers on this coming weekend, Happy Mother's Day. I know it's a, it's a great opportunity. We shouldn't just take one day to celebrate our mothers. We should take them all year. And I want to shout out to my own mother, who's in Somerville, Tennessee. Mom, I love you, and I will talk to you on Sunday. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Dwyson for her comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Good evening, Board President, La French, Board of Trustees, AESD staff and community. I'm pleased to share some of our highlights from academic services. So I first would like to wish all of our teachers Happy National Teachers' Day. Thank you for the work that you do every day. Even on the hard days, your work plays a major role in the success of our students. So many classes we walk through where there's joy, excitement, and without you, there is no school. So thank you. This week is also National School Nurses Week, and I'd like to give a huge shout out to our two district nurses, Lindsay Marlborough and Darlene Paez, for all the behind-the-scenes work to make sure our students are healthy and all our medical records are up to date. They do so much behind-the-scenes screenings, IEPs, organizing our partners at Reliable Nursing. And I just want to give them a huge thank you for the work that they do. Summer school enrollment is climbing. We're now up to about 530 students. So we keep, we actually have paper flyers going out this week as well. And so we look forward to that number to continue to rise. We have a robust program plan for our students, and so I want to thank those involved in the behind-the-scenes. Our reclassification ceremony we held last Thursday, we honored about 67 students across our district for reclassifying. And it was a packed house at Gus Franklin, about over 200 people there celebrating. There was a photo booth. I just want to give a huge shout out to our administrators who were there to support and our academic services team for putting all of that together. We are going to be sending out a survey to all of our teachers in regards to professional development needs and requests for the upcoming school year. I want to thank our ADTA for their input on professional development needs for our teachers so that we can work together, and we look forward to hearing those results. We also introduced our curriculum, our new comprehensive instructional guides that we will be developing for four subject areas. We have ELA, math, history, and science. So we're going to be looking for teachers who, in the month of June, want to help us out to put those together. That's a community effort, pulling resources, looking at pacing. And so if you're interested in that, please reach out to Vanessa Friedman or Carol Coburn. And then I would like to invite everyone on Saturday, May 20th, from 8:00 to 12:00, we have the Young Authors and Artists Festival. And so we're looking forward to celebrating the creativity of our students across the district in the areas of writing and the arts. So with that, that is the conclusion, and a Happy Mother's Day as well to all the mothers. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Dwyson, Mr. Moran.
Good evening, President La French, trustees, Superintendent Kraus, Cabinet, staff, and community members. Thank you for allowing me to share some HR updates. First, I'd like to just thank ADTA for their members who attend the four yearly liaison meetings. These are meetings where we discuss non-contractual items. So I'd like to thank everybody who participated there. Also, in regards to CSCA negotiations, I know we have tentatively, tentatively settled with CSCA. So I'd like to thank our team, Alejandra Gonzalez, Christian Cooper, Julie Nichols, Zach Klemish, for their hard work and giving up valuable time from their regular duties. So I'd like to thank them, and hopefully that gets passed by CSCA's vote this week. From the certificated side of the House, summer school assignments are finalized and all certificated staff were notified. Teacher interviews are continuing for the 2324 school year. We are filling many positions with qualified candidates. I'd like to thank our HR staff who attended the Adelanto Stadium hiring event. It was a huge success. Thank you to Gloria and Kim from our HR department for their hard work and dedication to recruit for our district. From the classified side, summer school assignments are finalized and all classified staff were notified. As another reminder, our HR staff is hosting an upcoming ed joint workshop and community fair. I believe I shared that the last few times, last few meetings. It's going to be held on Saturday, May 20th, and Saturday, May 27th, at Mesa Linda Middle School from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Regarding benefits, so we had a benefits fair at Melva Davis, as you may remember. We held that last week. Many employees attended and had the opportunity to engage with our partners like Kaiser, VSP, Horace Mann, Schools First, CalHelp, Azusa Pacific University, Grand Canyon University, and many others, including tables by our ADTA and CSCA partners. Several raffle prizes were given away to those in attendance. Some of the prizes were a Yeti ice chest, a coffee machine, several gift cards were some of the prizes. Again, thank you to our partners in attendance and for their generous donations. Another reminder about open enrollment. It began on May 1st and runs through May 25th. So if you need to make any changes to your benefits, please be sure to schedule that meeting between those two dates. And finally, on district events, I am looking forward to attending as many events as I can that are being planned for the end of the school year, kindergarten, fifth, and eighth grade promotions, end-of-the-year academic award ceremonies, choir, band, and concerts, and more. In addition, another event I happened to attend, along with other district office staff, was Taco Tuesday at Adelanto Elementary School. AES students earned Taco Day for winning a contest for having the most increased participation during National School Breakfast Week in March. CNS staff did a great job, as always, and they barbecued carne asada outside for all the students and other staff who wanted to pay a few dollars to get a taco meal. So I and several people from the district office walked over to enjoy that. So thank you to CNS, and thank you to those kids for earning that. I'd like to thank Dr. Dwyson and her team for organizing the English learner reclassification ceremony at Gus Franklin last week. Many parents and district administrators attended, as she just shared a few minutes ago. It was great to see many students who have been reclassified, so a huge thank you to the teachers for their hard work and, and the hard work with our English learners. As an English learner myself, these kids will definitely see the benefits of not only succeeding in English and the English language, but the many opportunities that will come their way. In addition, they will continue to use their primary language, like Spanish or other languages, to enhance their skill set in the future. So again, Dr. Dwyson and team, thank you for allowing me to be part of that celebration. And finally, I'd like to recognize all of our amazing teachers for their hard work and dedication. Happy Teachers' Appreciation Week. This concludes our HR update. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. That's all our comments from Cabinet this evening.
Moving on to section 12, staff reports and presentations.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We'd like to call up the team from Runal Clark, who has been working on a presentation for us for the last several years. One of the things the district has never had is a long-range facility master plan. So we identified that we needed one, and we've been working with our partners at Runal Clark. And we want to thank Mr. Clark and his team for all the hard work they put into this. And, and so what we'll do is eventually we'll revisit this as time goes on and update it as we are able to. But this evening, Mr. Clark and his team will be presenting on it. So thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here tonight, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Kraus, Cabinet, and all the many people in the audience. Sorry. Have to have some humor this time of night, right? With me tonight is Jessica Manson, and she's the Director of Funding and Facilities for our firm. And she's been instrumental in putting this together. And so she's going to lead some of the initial discussion here, kind of giving you an overview of the master plan process that we went through, the master plan components, the educational specifications, and hopefully you've all had a chance to look at it and see what's in that and then what those kind of identified areas of focus were. And then I'll come back and talk about some of the individual master plans. We're obviously not going to go through every individual site tonight, but we're going to review three of the different sites and then just talk about what's next. So, Jessica.
Thank you. Good evening. We were requested to keep this presentation to about 10 minutes to save time. So I'm going to brush through a few of these beginning slides to allow Roger enough time to go through the sites in detail. So just really quick overview of this facility master plan. It's essentially a 10- to 15-year roadmap for facilities, ensuring, looking at the existing facilities and then making ensuring, looking at the existing facilities and then making sure that we're tying into the educational programs and components into that master plan as well, and then tying costs of that too. So, again, creating that roadmap for the next ten to fifteen years. So, you and I have an idea of what you're looking at and what it's going to be in the future. So, I'm kind of taking a deeper dive into this, and again, I won't, not going to go through every single one of these. It's kind of self-explanatory, but just really quickly, the arrows, the arrows that are pointing into that circle that says this facility master plan, that's the information or the input that we're getting from the district to help us along with the facility master plan process. And then the arrows that are going away or outward is the output of the information that we're giving back to you based on what you guys gave to us. So, the educational specifications, the site plans, which Roger will be going over, along with the cost estimates. So, the educational specifications are another component of the master plan, and they're essentially tying together the facilities along with the educational program to make sure that what we're designing aligns with what your guys' vision is for education. That way, where, you know, as architects, you don't have architects coming in that are just designing what they feel looks really cool. It, again, is supposed to align with your educational vision and program. And so, throughout this process, I've had the, again, Roger said, I had the pleasure of working with the district throughout the past few years on this master plan. And so, these were some of the identified areas of focus. So, as you go through the site plans, and Roger will, you know, go through them, but you'll kind of see these reoccurring themes throughout the master plans and site plans. So, innovation spaces and STEM labs, sustainability wellness centers, replacing portables, TK Kinder, because TK has been a new implementation that districts have had to take on. So, really looking at that and making sure that those classrooms are Title V compliant, performing arts centers, putting a gym at George VPA and science classrooms. I won't go through every single one, but again, these are the identified areas of focus, and you'll see these themes kind of throughout the master plan.
Thank you, Jessica. And one thing I just want to emphasize in terms of a master plan, it really is providing a roadmap. It's not a design per se. That comes later, depending on what you implement and what portions of the master plan move forward. And so, it's not a design, but it's given you that overall viewpoint of what you told us you wanted to include, what was important to you, and hopefully we've captured that in what you're about to see. And so, some of the things that we looked at, and we've kind of categorized it in different categories. One is modernization, where we look at, you know, exterior and interior finishes. Do we have, you know, things that are in disrepair? The carpet's worn out, you know, the roof needs replaced, those kinds of things. The HVAC system, the air conditioning needs upgrades and needs to be fixed, or it needs to be planned to be fixed. So, one of the things with a master plan is we're looking not just immediate, we're looking five, ten years down the road. And so, that HVAC system may not be failing now, but we're looking seven or eight years from now. Probably needs to be scheduled to where it's included on a list of things that need to be upgraded. Fire alarm system, electrical, low voltage technology, those kinds of things. Major modernization, some cases, you're going to see some things here, and you've probably seen it in the master plan where we talked about reconfiguring a space, something that needed to be changed. We've even, some cases, converted an MPR into a library media center and then built a new facility. You think you're going to see that in a minute. And then we have new construction. We don't have a lot of that because we don't have the need for a lot of additional classrooms. But one of the things you expressed was looking at possibly replacing portable classrooms with permanent construction, and so that's on the list. And then there's, of course, is site work that goes along with that. So, as we do other construction, we have to look at Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. We need to make sure that the sites are accessible. We looked at security and fencing and made sure those were addressed in the master plan. So, all those kinds of things add up. So, the first one that we're going to look at here is Adelanto Elementary School, and it's your oldest operational campus in Adelanto. And this is kind of some of the things that, as you see on your screens, hopefully, the things that, from the facility condition assessment that we saw out there. And so, I won't go through all of these, but one of the things that, you know, was a major concern was the administration, the kitchen, the MPR, kind of not in very good condition, not very inviting for parents as you come onto the campus. And one of the first things we heard from sessions with the Board of Education and from administration was, and really all those stakeholders, is that's something that really needs to be addressed. And so, we started looking at that, and what could we do? You have issues with, really with security. You have parking down at one end, but you have, you know, the main entry into the campus on the other end. And so, how do we start to address that? And so, we looked at, you know, the electrical, the mechanical systems, the interior finishes, all those kinds of things. And so, this was kind of a narrative of what that condition looked like out there, and as you go through that, and we can, you know, talk about that, but some of those portable classrooms in this case between twenty-four and thirty years old. And so, those buildings were never really designed to be on a campus that long. And so, one of the things that you're going to see in the plan here is that we looked at some replacement. So, in this case, the master plan reflects creating a new administration, moving that main entry down to the larger parking lot so that we have more room for drop-off for parents. We have an immediate, secure access into the site. We have the multipurpose room, which is another facility where parents are visiting quite often. They go to assemblies and those kinds of things, bringing that over onto that side of campus, but also orienting it to the playground so that students can go immediately from where they're eating out to recess and to those activities. And then what we did is adaptively reuse that existing multipurpose room, turn it into a library and STEM space. And so, we're trying to preserve as much as possible, but then we look at, you see in green on there, minor modernization of some of those buildings, just looking at those long-term needs and short-term needs of what are the finishes, what is the technology, and all those things that I've been talking about were a part of that. And so, that was kind of the plan here, and then you see, you know, some solar panels. Again, owing to that sustainability. And so, all of this has a cost, and some of the, you know, the price tag here, you know, the construction costs in here, estimated of all those items that were identified at roughly thirty-two point one million. And then there's soft costs, and soft costs are things related to Division of State Architects fees. Those are testing and inspection fees, design fees, furniture and equipment, all those things that go along with a project, but don't necessarily go into the construction of, say, the ceilings or the floors or the walls. And so, we come up with a total project cost as we go through this. And so, just wanted to bring that up. And again, these things can be prioritized, and you don't have to do every single thing on this list. And so, as you look through these and start seeing, you know, all these numbers across your district and see how are we ever going to pay for that. I think one of the things that we're going to talk about in a minute is how do we prioritize, and how do we talk about the next steps. Columbia Middle School. We just looked at kind of a cross-section tonight real briefly. And again, kind of the same thing, we started looking at, you know, what were the deficiencies? There's some flooding issues. There's administration that really needs a little bit of work here. The MPR needed some upgrades, and then we looked at the portable classrooms on this site also. And then this was kind of the, and you have a large number of portables, looking at thirty-one portables. But you have some enrollment, and so maybe we can do some efficiencies and not have to replace all of those buildings. We talked about EV charging stations and bringing that up to current standards. And so, this was kind of the plan that was developed, bringing in solar panels, a major modernization in that administration, bringing that up to date, creating kind of that secure entry into the campus, doing some minor modifications in the gym, the locker rooms, and a lot of the classroom buildings. And then here you see that one new classroom building over there. If you want to take the step of replacing those portables and plan for that as you move forward in the future. And this one is even, you know, a little bit more expensive, just because of the size and the number of buildings and things that are affected, and it's estimated at about forty-three point five million, forty-three point six, excuse me. And then the project cost of around fifty-four point five. And then we looked at your district office and some of the issues that we see here. And when I say the district office, I mean the entire complex that you have here with your nutrition services, maintenance, and operations and your district office. And so, some of the things we started looking at is the safety of movements in and around this site. And so, you have access to your maintenance, your shops, to the pool. You have all that coming through this site. And you have a lot of movements of large vehicles and public vehicles and small cars, and all of that kind of jumbled together. And then you have a district office that may or may not be meeting your needs. And so, we started looking at what could we do here? And we talked to, you know, the stakeholders, we talked to nutrition services and your maintenance and operations people, and really got, you know, some great input from them. And so, in this plan, and this is probably one of the most significant ones in the district, one of the things they expressed is, you know, with all of the meals, and I think it came about from COVID, is having a new central kitchen facility that they can really provide the number of meals and the quality of meals to serve your student body. And so, that's that kind of building that you see kind of on the top. And what we did is split the way that you come into the site. And so, you come in in one side of that, you have the personal vehicles kind of in those areas where the blue number twos are on your site plan. And then the trucks and the big vehicles then go to a nutrition service center, and then they exit the site without crossing over other traffic. We, in this case, what we did is we moved the district office off of this property and just looked at what if. And this night probably isn't the site where you put a new district office if you're going to do that, where we've located it, but we located it adjacent to where you're at now. Whether or not that's available, we're not sure. But we, you know, wanted to at least do a test fit and see how this would work. The goal here was is to create a facility that works for your maintenance, your operations, creates a safe environment for all those vehicle movements, and there are a lot of those vehicles coming on and off the site. So, what we did is we created a separate entry coming into the pool facility so that it doesn't mix with any other vehicles. The maintenance vehicles come in the main drive down here behind you right now. And then they would come in, go into maintenance bays, or they would go into their shops, and they're traversing the site without having to do a lot of backing up. One of the things we try to do when we do this kind of facility is we create a traffic pattern such that large vehicles are not backing up as much as possible. And so, what we tried to do is keep that flow of traffic going in a single direction, in this case, counterclockwise. And then we moved and we created a new building or remodeled this one into some of those maintenance shops and created the facility for them, and then moved the district office into a new facility on this, on this campus, as you see it right here. But again, where you select that, where that's to go, or if you even want to go to this degree is entirely up to the board and to your community. And again, there's a large price tag for doing these central kitchens, and these types of facilities can get very expensive. And so, you see some of the numbers here of approximately eighty-five million, and that's for all those buildings being new, and that's from the central kitchen to the maintenance shops to the district office as a part of the overall master plan. And so, those are kind of the highlights of some of the sites that we looked at. The next steps, obviously, it's on the agenda tonight to adopt the master plan, but one of the things is, is looking at, where do you go from here? How do you prioritize? How do you look at what happens first? How do you look at whether you go forward with trying to obtain additional funding, looking at what you can do with the resources that you have now, and with any state funding allocations that may be out there and the district might be eligible for. And so, with that, I'll open up to any questions you have.
Or does anyone have any questions?
I do. I'm getting feedback on my, you know, I was looking at our last long-range facility plan, and I think that was in two thousand and eleven, was the last time we've done this. And at that time, I think our district office was relatively new. We did not construct a new district office. We added on to the existing building because the state would not allow us to have a new construction at that time. My question is, at this time, is the state allocating money for new construction and to make some of these repairs?
Let's, let me go back to that. In terms of the district office property, there wouldn't be any state funding for
There will not be.
There would not be.
Okay.
You could keep, you know, one of the reasons we moved the district office off of this property is just the safety of, you know, vehicles coming in and around this, you know, and where it was located. You could choose certainly to, if it meets your needs, to keep that district office, and possibly you move some of the maintenance operations, transportation. Maybe you move that to another property, or we find ways to make those movements safer on the existing site. It's just going to be somewhat difficult with all those different traffic movements to make that possible. And that was some of the feedback that we got from your staff.
Okay. I know this is a long-range plan, but based on what was presented tonight, and I guess I'll be talking to the superintendent about that, what are some of the things that we need to accomplish right now based on this plan?
So, I want to thank Mr. Clark and his team. They really did exhaustive research into all of our facilities. And for example, you mentioned AES tonight. So, one of the things we know we need to look at is the underground, the pipes, the water pipes, the sewer pipes, things of that nature right now, because they've been deteriorating over the last many years. And as one of our oldest schools, we've identified that as a priority as far as getting that potentially accomplished, as well as all of our other sites with the infrastructure. What's underground, which you can't see sometimes is worse than what you can see above the ground. And so, in order to keep our sites operating efficiently, that's definitely a priority for our team after we worked, and they've worked with all of our departments to look at that definitely as the underground infrastructure for sure.
My second question is, in trustee area one, where we have Morgan, Kade, Mesa Linda, Eagle Ranch, there's no place to build new construction for our students. And from what I understand, we're almost maxed out there. What are the plans to add new buildings, new classrooms to those sites?
So, one of the ways that districts have been successful in working on sites that you can't expand out is expanding up. So, for instance, looking at two-story buildings, two-story classroom buildings, for example. And so, we don't have a whole lot of that. Morgan has a couple of classrooms upstairs, but that's really the only way we can go at those sites is look at potentially renovating up. And Mr. Clark has extensive experience as an architect firm with, working with districts on that as well, but that would be the only real way to move is up.
Okay. Is that, I didn't see that in this plan.
So, that's, that's something that we just barely had started talking about. We wanted to get this plan, just the general, this is the baseline long-range facility master plan. And so, in the future, we'll be able to update this with updates on all of our sites. Because we don't want to wait every ten years to bring this back to the board for review, and as we do things, as the board may be aware, we're renovating our pool as an example. So, that would be updated in this plan once that's completed. Any other major construction that we do will be updated as we update the long-range facility master plan.
And I say that because I'm, like I said, trustee area one, that area, I'm anticipating growth in that area. And like I said, we can't build any, a new school in that area. So, in ten years, eleven years, should we include that in our master plan, our long-term facility plan to include the growth?
So, one of the things that we would encourage and recommend, and the district did do this, is they provided, you know, demographic data for the master plan study. And so, we did a capacity and utilization study as a part of the master plan. Right now, it's not showing immediate need for expansion, but watching those numbers and looking at development on a year-to-year But watching those numbers and looking at development on a year to year basis and looking at it every year, I would highly recommend you do. Because we can do all the planning we're on right now. And the numbers, you know, and the projections that they have don't show immediate impacts, but that can change very quickly with the housing prices that are, you know, everywhere else. And you're the last area that you know, people can come to to buy affordable housing. You're going to see some of that growth, I believe.
I think that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. This is really great.
Trustee Bens.
So the question I had was, when we approve the plan, we're not exactly approving like the district. Because like I would think that the this district office thing would be the last on the list, and the schools would be the first that we would want to improve.
You're actually not approving any priority prioritization right now as a part of this master plan. It doesn't present any prioritization. And so that's really, like I mentioned before, is one of your next steps is to figure out with available funding and then what priorities you have as a board and as a community.
Okay. And also I want to thank, thank, thank you for staying so late. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Trustee Soto.
I didn't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you for your time and for your presentation. You know, as a trustee, I appreciate the level of detail and transparency provided in this plan. So I look forward to working with the business services department to ensure it's successful implementation.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Webster.
I do want to say thank you to both of you for being here with us tonight. It was really great to see some of your ideas you've proposed for our district. And I do look forward to speaking with Mr. Cross and the board and what we can get done.
And I concur with the rest of my board members. And I do thank you for staying late. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Cross, thank you.
Moving on to section twelve point zero two.
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Dwyson, if you can take that.
Absolutely. Thank you. So this next item is our Williams settlement, second quarter and third quarter report. This is a report that we bring to you quarterly. Basically, what they look at are instructional materials, school facilities, SARC and teacher assignment monitoring. So I'm happy to report for quarter two and quarter three that there were no findings in these areas.
Thank you. That was wonderful. Section two, one, two point zero three.
And Dr. Dwyson, you again.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much. So this is again, another quarterly report that we're required to bring before the board. This has to do with our uniform complaints. And this is for quarter two and quarter three of this year. Again, happy to report in this area that we had zero findings.
That is wonderful. No complaints. Okay. Moving on to section thirteen, adoption of the minutes. Thirteen point zero one, trustees, can I get a motion to approve the following board minutes? Regular board meeting minutes of April the eleventh, twenty twenty three. Regular board meeting minutes of April the twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, and the special board meeting minutes of May the second, twenty twenty three. May I get a motion?
Madam President, I motion that we approve.
Thank you.
Ben, I sec- second.
Thank you, Ms. LaVey. Please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Ben, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass five zero. Moving on to section fourteen, consent agenda. We are taking items fourteen point zero two through fourteen point two seven. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Ben, I would like to pull I, item fourteen point eighteen. That is the certificated res- resignations for the purpose of retirement.
Anyone else?
Trustee Turner, I would like to pull fourteen twenty.
Anyone else? Okay. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda minus fourteen point eighteen and fourteen point twenty?
Trustee Turner, a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
Ben, I sec- second.
Ms. LaVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Ben, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass five zero. Moving on to fifteen, items removed from the consent agenda. A motion to approve, approve fourteen point eighteen.
Ben, I motion, motion to, to approve I, I, item four, fourteen point eighteen.
Webster, I second.
Any discussion?
I do. I pulled this specifically for discuss- discussion. Even though we didn't talk often, I want to wish Mr. Carl Carlson the best in his re- retirement, as well as Ms. Tom Thomas. Ms. Mr. Carl Carlson is one of the few teachers, you know, there are, there are those ones that stick, stick out at you. And when he taught sci- science at Melva Dave Davis, we had some dis- discussions. And I do want to wish him the very, very best in his future endeavors as well as Ms. or Mrs. Tom Thomas.
Yes, I will, I would like to concur with trustee Bens on these two retirees. You're gonna be definitely missed. Mr. Carlson, you're so excited. You bring a lot of passion, you know, to, you know, your, 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 your science and, and the things that you do. I haven't been able to make it over to your reading classes on Wednesday nights. But what I'm hearing is that it's very enjoyable. And Debbie Thomas, you're gonna be missed, you know. I like it when, if you hear something at a board meeting, you don't hesitate to reach out to me and ask questions. And you're very professional and very caring and very warm. You're gonna be missed. And I know that your students are gonna miss you, miss you, and your colleagues will miss you, both of you. So enjoy your retirement. You're doing it while you're still young, and you can have fun and travel, spend time with your grandkids and, and just enjoy life from this period on. So congratulations on your retirement.
Anyone else? Well, I would say congratulations. And as I will continue to say, I wish it was me. Thank you. Okay, moving on to fourteen point, can we, oh, okay.
Madam President, I'll take the vote. Trustee, you're welcome. Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Ben, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass five zero. Can I get a motion to approve fourteen point twenty?
I motion that we tabled this item into the next board meeting only because the employee was absent today. So if we can move this to the next board meeting.
Can I get a second?
Ben, I sec- second.
Ms. LaVey, can you call for the vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Ben, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass five zero. New business, section sixteen, sixteen point zero one, trustees, can I get a motion to approve resolution twenty two point twenty three point twenty nine, excusing the absence of trustee Miguel Soto on May the second, twenty twenty three?
Trustee Turner, I move that we approve trustee Soto's absence on May second, twenty twenty three.
Ben, I sec- second.
Ms. LaVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I abstain.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Ben, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass for eyes one. Sustained. Moving on to section seventeen, governing board members' reports and announcements.
Ben has none because she is really tired and sleepy, sleepy. So she will abstain, but I do want to say two things. First thing, tomorrow, morrow is Mexican Mother, Mother, Mother's Day. It's always, always on the, the tenth. So it doesn't change days. It's always on the tenth. So I want to wish all of the mother, mother, mothers, whether you're Mexican or not, I wish you the best. And kids, hug, hug your moms and tell, tell them, thank, thank you. And for all the other moms for this sun, 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 Sunday. And I just want to thank you. And again, kids, thank your moms. Clean your rooms, please. Okay, that, that's how you, you show, show love, okay? And I wish you all a good night.
Thank you. Trustee Soto.
I reserve my comments for the next meeting, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Webster.
Okay, no, this one's short. Okay. Good evening, AESD family and friends. I would like to start tonight's speech by saying thank you to all those throughout our district making memories this year. We have seen countless field trips, and I can only imagine the amount of hard work that goes into facilitating chaperones, sack lunches, transportation, and so much more. These trips with friends, family, and school staff are the memories these kids will hold for a lifetime. So thank you so much for all those supporting our students. I also see some amazing events going on throughout our district as we enter into the month of May. I encourage all to check out the awards and graduations. If you have a student receiving an award or graduating, I do ask you, invite the family. Students thrive with support systems and even more. So when they see the ones they love out supporting their hard work, please remember summer school registration can be found on our district website. And my understanding on school platforms, I want to encourage all families to check it out. We have some pretty fun activities planned out for the little ones this year as our summer school program continues to develop. Thank you, academic services. Lastly, I want to touch base on the encouragement of kindness. Life is hard. And we all are entitled to bad days. Sometimes we even take the crap from others who are having a bad day, not necessarily because we ourselves are the problem, but because we are there in that moment. I want to remind everyone, we only see a fraction of a person. We don't see the everyday battles. Others face illnesses or family issues, monetary issues, and many more. This goes for students and adults. So I do challenge everyone in this last month of May, before we head to summer, to remind those around you at work and home how much you appreciate them. Because that one smile could change the rest of their day. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. And to those who are listening, and I hope everyone does have a good night.
Thank you, trustee Turner.
Okay, I would just like to say, Happy Teachers' Day, and thank you for your hard work and dedication that you bring to our students every single day. And Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, even the mothers with no children, the ones that you attend to as a mother figure. So you're appreciated as well. I have to apologize before we went to closed session, you know, commenting on the performances tonight. I forgot to acknowledge Braddock. And thank you, students. Your performance was outstanding. Thank you, teachers, parents. Your presentation was absolutely amazing. I get so excited about our children presentation and how how educated they are and, and they're striving for greatness. And I can't wait to see you in the next ten years and how you've grown as a person. I also want to thank our, our student board member, Akari Boys. He was so excited and focused on what he was doing. So that was a pleasure having him sit with us and going to our closed session to see where we break for closed session. He was really excited, he and his brother. And thank you, thank you, Ms. Bowers, for bringing that to the board's attention. That was greatly needed. I would like to acknowledge at this time, our ADTA and our CSEA board president, presidents, not board presidents, union presidents, on your positive comments. They're greatly appreciated. I know at times, you know, you're, it's, it's a great challenge when you have to answer questions to your units. And Ms. Rader, last board meeting, you know, it was, it was really refreshing to hear, you know, you know, you giving refreshing comments to our superintendent and to the board. So again, even tonight, I, we appreciate that. I would like to also talk about on some of our most challenging board policies, and we have some challenging policies coming up for board approval. I would like to see a board, a survey, a parent's survey on how, what they would like to see on some of these most challenging board policies. Get our, get our community response on these things. It's important. I would like to hear what you would have to say on that. So with that being said, I think I didn't forget anything. I'm getting old, so sometime, trust me, if I don't write it down, I'll forget. But anyway, thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I just want to say to all the teachers out there, you know, happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you for all you do. I want to say that I am proud and congratulating Mr. Klaus and Dr. Dwyson on finishing their urban superintendent academy. That shows great leadership of continuing to further your education, doctor and all, right? I'm excited. And I will leave my comments at that. Everyone, drive safe. Thank you out there in Zoom land for joining us. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Webster, I motion to adjourn.
Soto.
You go ahead.
Soto, I second.
Ms. LaVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Bens.
Ben, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
Trustee LaFrench, I. The time is now nine fifty three, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.